The centurion's name is Ocedeal. Interesting name. There was another correction.
Yes, Bob found one. For whatever reason, I tried to call it a joke. I need to fix that.
Any other additions or corrections? Move to approve. Move to approve this correction. Seconded by Goodman. Those are papers. Five zero. Okay, the Board of Public works in safety minutes for February ninth and twenty-third during your packets if you have information purposes. Do we have no communications? Do we have no public hearings? Is there anyone here regarding the five twenty-five Madison Street update? Property situation for confirmation?
Just me.
You?
Yes, me. Hop over here, somebody leaving after one step.
Okay.
I don't know where they're at.
Heather, would you identify yourself, please, for the recorder?
Yes, I'm Heather Reddinger, the Director of the Plank Commission. I spoke to the mom, Linda, a couple of weeks ago at length. Last I knew, they were going to hire a demolition contractor to tear it down. I haven't spoke with Laura since then. So I don't know, I thought she was going to be here this evening. The mom is having surgery tomorrow, so I don't think she gets out much anyway with her health, but I thought Laura would be here.
Does it give you a timeline on demolition?
No, I don't know if you've ever spoke to Mrs. Sager, but she's very emotional about this whole ordeal.
Yeah, I know.
So I probably had an hour conversation with her last time, so. I don't know if they hired someone, I mean, that was the last I knew.
It was a big number, from what I heard, to have it.
It was, it was.
But it was an even bigger number to have it brought up to code.
It was eighteen-five, I think, for demo and a hundred and twenty-four for repairs.
Yeah, there's a lot, a lot. So the conversation I had was leaning towards the demolition, but haven't heard whether it's going to work with it or not.
No, and after our last meeting, I know they did speak with Jacksons, because I did talk to Doug Jackson about it, they hadn't signed any contracts or anything, but I know they spoke with them, that was the eighteen-five quote.
Do you think, gentlemen, there's not a lot we can do till we get some more information? Need a little bit of input from the owner, just what they're doing.
Yeah.
Do you plan on reaching out to her and saying, you know, counsel really needs some more information?
I can, I said I thought they would be here tonight, at least Laura. Yeah, I can, I have her number, I can send her a letter just to have it in writing, probably, so. I guess it's up, I mean, what do you guys, just want me to tell her we need, next meeting, she needs to present more information, or she presents it to me and I can just forward it on, or?
Well, I think we need to know what the plan is, what the timeline is, because we can't just leave this, because you know it's on the agenda because it was an issue.
Right.
And they said, last I recall, they had, they were going to demo, and I thought, I can't remember if they said they had someone or they were still taking bids. I think she said they were still taking bids. So we need to, I think we need to see a signed contract before we date, otherwise we have to take action.
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying, I mean, we can't forget the fact it's brought to our attention by a neighbor who's afraid it's going to fall in on their property, their situation. So you're asking Heather to reach out, please.
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you. Thanks, Heather.
Yep, I just have one more quick thing, so you guys have a full plate tonight, but the new business is going uptown, the mustard seed, right there on the corner of Sixth and Main. I talked to her about the signs, because it's historical downtown, and she sent me back that the creator is a metal artist and the words will be made from scrap welded metal objects, like bike chains, hinges, washers and screws, and the letters will be tastefully welded onto a background of a light neutral tone. I told her I'd bring that to your attention, if she needs to bring that to you guys, because she's in the historical downtown, if you're going to be okay with the letters being made out of the recycled.
Is there any drawings? Yeah, there you go.
No, it's just something she's envisioned, but she didn't want to go any further unless she knew she could be able to use it. But I just talked to her last week, so I told her I would ask you guys about it, and if she needs to come in front of you guys with a drawing, I would let her know, but...
In the past, everything that's been a variance of what is in the ordinance has came to council for approval, so I would recommend that that continue for you guys to approve it officially, if you're going to make a variance.
Kind of what I thought, she said.
Yeah, drawings would be helpful, very much.
I did email her this morning and ask her for some, but I haven't heard back, so, before I came tonight. Okay, so I'll just have her get with Shada and get on the agenda whenever she's ready for it, I know she wants to open soon.
And as you all know, if we get to the point where we're pushing the envelope and you go outside that border of the historical corridor, then there are grand opportunities that you're not going to be available. Go ahead. Namely, Oprah.
All right, and that's it?
Boy, you've got all sorts of missions out of this tonight, Heather.
Nope, that's okay.
By the way, you do a good job.
Thank you.
Sir, we appreciate you being around.
Thank you.
A good job. Anything else?
That's it, and I'm gonna sprint out of here. I live in town, so I don't need to know about the golf carts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, Heather.
Bye.
She does do a great job. Okay, update on proposed yard and waste and leak pickup ordinance modification.
We met, we had our first meeting, we are scheduled to meet on the eighteenth. Again, we've asked, I've asked Dwayne to join us, he's going to join us, and then we were thinking about reaching out to some of our local contractors as well, getting input. This isn't, I mean, we're not, we're just taking our time, we want to get, digest every aspect of this so we can come away with something that's palatable to both sides. And we have plenty of time before leaves start falling, so I think.
Well, I don't know, but the pile's up there right now.
I just blow those in the air, sure.
Okay, golf cart committee update, with letter and proposed ordinance for review. Mark, were you the coordinator of the committee?
I think I drew the short straw. Am I okay doing it from here, or do you need to go?
You identify yourself, I think, and pick it up.
I need you to come up here in the center and do it.
I'm Mark McCall, I'm a member of the golf cart committee. The committee met multiple times to discuss this and come up with a potential recommendation for the council. We've included in packets a letter along with the framework of a potential ordinance. The members of the committee were City Councilman John Garrett and Marty Smith, Police Chief Schatz, City Attorney Andy Perkins, myself, Lisa Repit and Catherine Noll. During our meetings, we discussed, really, the benefits, the challenges, went back and forth, we took a look at neighboring communities' ordinances that had them, and really wanted to come up with a solid framework of a proposed ordinance if the council decides to approve the usage of golf carts in the city. As a committee, we did not come to an agreement, we were divided as a group, so you're not going to have a recommendation yea or nay from us. We looked at the scope of our task to really consider all of the pros and cons and to come up with an ordinance if you decide to move forward. Everybody from what you see in that ordinance had inputs on the ordinance, so everybody that was part of the group had a voice in what you see in front of you. If you have any questions, we have a handful of the members of the committee here, I know Marty wasn't able to attend.
Catherine Noll, for the record, I would just add one simple thing, I think it was the consensus of the committee that we wanted to bring it for a vote, so that the community could know how the city council truly felt, and I think that was the consensus, that we want the city council to take a vote.
Yeah, yeah, there's enough public outcry from both sides that I think it'd be good for the council to consider this and take a stand, and from that point forward, the thing that we've discussed was enforce whatever's decided. You know, if there's a golf cart ordinance that's passed, make sure it's, everything that is enforced, if there's not one passed, then, you know, I think we agree that that end that needs to be enforced as well.
And Lisa, you remember the committee?
Yes, I was.
Something bad?
With what was just being said, it really was looking at whether you were for it or against it, if there was a proposal that went to a vote, what was in the best interest of the community for the city council to determine what, if they would want it or not, and that's the things that we outlined. As a group, we did not want to have our opinions put upon the city council saying, yes, we wanted it, or no, we did not. It was, this was the research that we found throughout the state, and this is the proposal that we felt would be the best proposal to go forward to the city council.
Attorney Perkins, you were in that committee?
I was.
Anything to add?
I don't think I have anything to add, I think they've encapsulated it.
Chief Schatz, were in that committee?
Yeah, I would reiterate what Mark said, whether or not we were for it or against it, I mean, I think I made my, I think I made it clear that I was against it. If we were going to present something to the council for consideration, it needed to be the best that we could come up with, looking at all aspects of it, safety and where the county can't. Yeah, I think.
And I think what Catherine mentioned rings true, you know, a vote from the council, because it's been brought up in the past, I believe the mayor appointed me to this committee because I was on the city council when it was brought up a couple of times, and it was never brought up for a vote, it was, we're going to maintain the status quo, which is currently no carts in the city. So I think a vote would put this issue to bed one way or the other.
So I noticed in the proposed ordinance, it has the registration line with the police department. What does that mean for us as far as, I mean, we have to hire someone to handle, do you have the staff to handle this as it is now?
Can we do it? Yeah, we can do it, is it going to be a burden? Sure is. And there's going to be some growing pains with it, too, I mean, if we were to, if the count, make the mistake, it doesn't matter what my opinion is, we will do whatever the council decides, so I want to make that very clear, I'm not trying to work against anyone. If the council decides to pass something, you know, we're going to have to order the registration stickers, and I would assume we would want new ones every year, so that when they renew them, we know they're in compliance, and we're going to have to do, I don't want to call them safety inspections, because I'm not a safety specialist, I don't know what makes it safe and what doesn't, I would say that it meets the criteria that we laid out in the ordinance, we would have to physically inspect those every year, make sure they're in compliance with the ordinance. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot to work out and figure out, and then just the enforcement aspect of it also.
We did, Chief also said that it would be done, here the carts would be brought here, or would we go on site?
We talked about that. It depends, it depends, I mean, if, you know, if someone has a VIN check, we need to VIN check on their vehicle at their house, we go to their house and do it. Could we go to their house? Maybe, but it's not something, I mean, if we're backed up on calls, it's not going to take priority, and it might be where, you know, we have one officer in charge of golf cart inspections, and you can only get them done without that officer working. Some things I've thought about. With this being due to us, I mean, I'm sure it's going to change over time, if it were to get passed, it would be an evolution and try to figure out what's best and what's worse and what doesn't. But yeah, ideally, I mean, they could bring them up here and get inspected, and, yeah, we'll see.
Do you guys have an estimate on how many carts?
Stationed.
In town?
There's any way around, I don't think, minds around that. Could be ten to fifteen, could be two hundred, just depends on interest from people off, well, out of the lake and in town.
Well, then you have to, but you have to get to how many carts are actually running around now, than compared to the carts that will have, that will have all the safety, the seat belts, the lights, the turn signals, that will have all the criteria on there to be able to drive around in the areas where they are allowed to drive.
Have you all had a chance to dig into the ordinance that was proposed?
Yeah, I mean, I looked through it, and I know one concern was minors driving on the streets, but that's addressed, because this states it has to be a licensed driver. The other, I guess the other question that pops in my mind is, how does this differ, I mean, I don't know how it differs from, but a horse and buggy, I mean, it's a slow-moving vehicle as well, you're not going to license that, we don't require insurance on that, how does it compare? I mean, because I would think we would have the same, same issues there, but I couldn't even tell you how many we have in town, I know, you don't see them out, big deal they are every now and then.
The horse and buggies?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm sure it's a horse-driven vehicle, so I don't, I don't even think it's a vehicle, it's an animal, you're on a carriage, I think, it's not a vehicle, it doesn't, doesn't have the same qualifications, I don't think.
But wouldn't that present some of the same issues that we would have?
This is actually a vehicle, a motor-driven vehicle, that we can, we can set the standards how we want, that's in the best protection we want.
I think my primary concern is safety.
Absolutely.
We already have a lot of issues with motorcycles, just because it's a smaller profile, not as visible.
And that's, that's where I'm coming from, my whole objection to them is, at a safety standpoint, they're inherently less safe than a vehicle, they're not, they're not designed. What, they're, just because they're permitted to be on the road doesn't mean they're designed to be on the road. And especially, I know, around the lakes is a hot topic, but every, every spring and summer, we get complaints of speeding vehicles on both sides of the lake, Wolf Point, Baskmore Park, Country Club, and I throw, slow-moving vehicles in with inexperienced drivers sometimes. They think it's safer, because it's fun, I think it's, I think we're inviting problems that we don't have now, depending on the serving. Yeah, I just think fundamentally, they're unsafe, for operation on the roadway, doesn't make a concern.
I agree, that might be a concern, safety, reading through the ordinance, and correct me if I'm wrong, is there something in there that prohibits them being on Main Street? Main Street's pretty busy.
They can't be on the state highway, there's a state statute, they can't be on the state highway, so Ninth Street, Main Street, south of Ninth Street, they couldn't, they can only cross perpendicular to, they can't travel down Main Street or Ninth Street where the state highway applies.
Oh, the state highway starts at Ninth Street?
Right.
It could be down, running up to downtown?
They can, yeah, yeah, north of Ninth Street is not a state highway, so they could be downtown.
That's, that was like, is that the business thirty-one or old forty-one?
No, the only state roads that, the only state highways that go through town are Ninth Street and Main Street.
The other thing I noted in this ordinance, was in my going through it, you mentioned motorcycles, motorcycles, they have to have the light on all the time, there wasn't anything regarding that, the light being on all the time.
Yeah, that's what I was.
I think there's something in there about a flag, do we have that?
We have a flag.
Yeah, a flag, six feet up.
Slow-moving vehicle placard.
Slow-moving vehicle placard, and then just have the lights for after dark, that's what the ordinance lights that I saw.
Because most golf carts don't have headlights, too. That would be a concern, too.
And a lot of these topics were discussed in our committee, I mean, it was a good discussion both ways.
Yes.
And I echo what he's saying, it was a really good committee, we might have all had different opinions, but everybody put their kind of opinion aside, and really looked at what was in the best interest of an ordinance. It wasn't us voting on the ordinance, it was comparing it to our county ordinance that allows golf carts, what does it have in it, and making sure it's aligned, because people are going to, over on Sixth Street, over there, are going to come in and out of city and county. Well, does it mirror each other, or is there differences? So it's just, that was a key part of working as that committee, but the committee overall worked really well, even with differences of opinion, everyone set it aside.
I would just include in that, that what was good for the ordinance, but what this group has to remember is, they have to decide what's good for Rochester overall.
Yes.
Yeah, and this ordinance is merely a suggestion, so, like any ordinance that's presented to the council or created by the council, it's your ordinance, so add, remove, alter, as you see fit, if this was the results of our meetings.
Do we need to drop it and officially do it, or can we just, we're just having to see if we want to move forward?
You can have either one of those votes, it depends on the motion.
Okay, I think you were asking for at least a straw vote as to where the council sits on the issue. In lieu of having the finished ordinance, I would suggest a straw, a straw vote, buddy. Can I ask you any questions?
Sure.
With the current ordinance that we have now, can, how, because the safety thing I get.
We don't have an ordinance right now.
We don't have one, here's no.
It's state law, but they're illegal unless you pass ordinance allowing them.
Okay, so is there any statistics that we have, how many golf carts have we pulled over for unsafe behavior?
A handful, if we see them out, we're going to stop them, tell them, I know, last fall, I seen one out, stopped him, said, hey, look, you know, you can't drive these on the road, it's educational, now if it's a repeat offender, then we'll start writing tickets, but we kind of handle it with kid gloves, we don't ignore it, but we ask them, and I don't, I don't think we've written any tickets, but...
What's the, what would be the fine structure as it exists?
It would be court, whatever the court imposes, because it's a state statute, so it would be written under state, state law, and go through the clerk's office, so a court costs right now, probably a hundred and fifty dollars plus fine, at least, a hundred and eighty, I don't know now. And it would be the same thing as a traffic ticket.
Was most of those, was there a common theme, was it youth, was it people hanging off the back, was it alcohol?
Not, I wouldn't say a common theme.
Okay, all, all of the above?
Probably, yeah, I know I stopped three people, I've stopped golf carts three times over the past year and a half, two years, one was an older gentleman, and two were younger kids, the one younger kid, there were probably four kids on the golf cart, I would say under sixteen years old. I don't remember how old the third one was, but, I think, go ahead.
No, you, that's okay.
My concern is, well, my concern is that we'll see more of that if we allow them to happen.
Is there, anybody want to speak about successful communities that have these, that you feel like is a success story, having golf carts?
I kind of rehashed it at the last meeting, Kathy Noll again for the record, but I mean, there are, I think, over a hundred and thirty communities and counties in the state of Indiana that have successful golf cart ordinances, and the research seemed to indicate, I think everybody does have different opinions on this, that it's a very positive thing for the communities. And the ordinance actually promotes the safety, because if you don't have the ordinance, as he stated, he had three golf carts pulled over, the ordinance says, okay, you can't do this, we want you to use the golf carts, but you can't have children that aren't licensed operating the vehicle, you have to have the safety equipment so that you're more visible, you have to have the flag, you have to have the placard, so you're making something that's already happening, much more safe for the community.
But like we talked about, the state law said that you can't have them on the road now, and there's still plenty of people that do that, so I understand what you're saying, we try to pass the best ordinance we can, but just because we pass something doesn't mean that people are going to follow it. I looked up a statistic, there's approximately fifteen thousand golf cart crashes and DUIs a year, and that number exponentially rises as more communities allow them, so that was part of what I was talking about.
Is that statewide, or?
No, I think that's in the country. That was part of what I was talking about, I think we're asking, we're inviting problems that we don't have now, is my concern.
Bob, if I may, I actually, when this started, had done some research through my connections throughout the state with my colleagues, I received a mixed bag, I forwarded all of, any email that I got, I forwarded to the council, so I can go back through, since you're new to this, I can go back through and forward you all of those, I think it was kind of a mixed bag, there were several communities that have them, that said if they had it to do over, they would not do it again, and several of them that said it was successful. Some of our neighboring communities that have it, my colleagues have told me, they, in their community, it's okay, it works, do they have challenges? Yep. But they would not recommend it for Rochester because of the way we're laid out, that's just communications with other clerk treasurers that manage, help manage some of these, plus their police departments, but I'm happy to forward those over to you, as I did the rest of the council members, so you have those.
How did they specify why their layout was more appropriate for that as opposed to ours?
Just the way that our, we're split up with the state roads, and the way that we have, you know, the lake is on the east side, and in our downtown area, our streets, for the most part, can be challenging with parked cars, because we have a lot of street parking and a lot of visibility, and I know that was one of the things, you know, you have kids on bikes, and I actually had a community member just catch me out at the grocery store, and she said, you know, I have trouble with not hitting the kids on their hoverboards, because they aren't on the sidewalk, they're in the street, and she goes, I can't touch And she goes, I can't tell you how many times I've almost hit one of those. And how do we manage that? Like we do, you know, it's kind of like a bicycle. But she, you know, she just expressed concerns, saying, you guys, everybody's already talked about with the safety concerns. But that was more, they understood how our layout was. And they just, they didn't think it would be conducive because of the way they're structured.
And geographically, the, the east side of the lake is at a much greater disadvantage. Because the only way they can get their golf carts into town, they can't take them down Ninth Street. For State Route fourteen, the only way they could legally get them into town would be go down four hundred to Fort Wayne Road. And then bring Fort Wayne Road all the way in. And I don't think many people probably want to do that, just to run to the gas station.
And I guess that's what I'm struggling with somewhat, and what I'm trying to think about. Because I think that side of the lake's probably primarily gonna stay on that side of the lake. I don't think they're gonna try to come downtown. I think the, the ones on the west side are gonna try to go to the B and K, for the most part. Maybe Dairy Queen, they might try to cross. But I don't, I don't see that being a three or four mile... I don't see people doing that, I guess. Or I can't envision it. And I know we're not at Culver. And I don't expect us to have the same issues that Culver has. And I know they've had issues. I look at Winnemac, who, they, they have it. And they seem, I mean, they're a community similar size. They don't have a lake. And they only got a river. They got a nice park around the river. That they can go down to and cruise to and downtown. And they seem to get along fine, but over there. And it, and I wouldn't say there's an abundance of them either. I, but that's just one community. But also, it seems to add to... I, I never see myself owning one and having one for my family. But it does seem to add a lot to community and, 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 I want to say, well, vibrant to businesses for some. But it's, but safety's a concern, and I give that.
Safety is the huge concern. I mean, it's certainly on everybody's mind. I spoke to a couple of folks from Dougmaralai last night. Shelbyville, they come up here. Shelbyville just went through this. They, two months ago, had brought to the city council something. And the chief of police was very adamant. Said, I will go on record that this is bad business for safety purposes. I want to go on record. Their council tabled it. Not sure where it's headed. They've got kind of an awkward situation for golf carts with their, how their cities laid out. But, but safety is the big issue.
Council's pitch one?
Was there any input from the school system? You call licensed drivers at sixteen, so juniors and seniors, that could drive themselves or parents and grandparents driving their kids to the school? Or in the schools, really?
It's a possibility. We talked about it?
So you, you did talk...
We talked about it as a group. For school, I wonder if they're not gonna allow that.
That's a big point. School may have an opinion as well.
I know I wasn't here right... You know, I read every one of the things that came to us from, from other communities. And one thing that they didn't really talk about is how it affected commerce. You know, I own two restaurants. So, so the way I kind of look at this is, how is it going to affect business in ten years or fifteen years? Because does that, once again, make our lake a place that people want to buy and, and come to? Or are they going to, you know, in a few years, when we're now the minority, because everybody else is passing it? You know, what, how is that gonna affect us as a, as a community and people wanting to move here? Because that's, that's pretty much what the code, it's all for. Is for the people that are here for the summertime, that really want to enjoy Rochester as a whole. And, you know, so you pull a few more people over and you make a little more money off of tickets. Because now you've got something to ticket them to buy. So, and every community has said that.
We don't, we don't generate, we don't generate revenue from writing tickets. It's like three dollars a ticket. And, and I think that's bad practice to try to generate revenue from writing tickets.
Well, no, but just, it, it, it would be inevitable. You know, I mean, you know, you know, mom and dad don't come up all the time with kids. And the kids decide to always break the law. You know, you can't control everything. So, so it's going to be inevitable that, that there will be a little bit there. And right now, the way I've heard things is, the people that are living over there by the Elks, on that side of the lake, they want to drive their, their golf cart to the Elks so that they can ride their golf cart on the, on the...
Golf course?
Golf course. That's illegal because I'm eight, eight houses down.
Technically.
Tech, absolutely. So that doesn't even sound fun if I was a golfer and was deciding to buy a house, buy a golf cart, horse, and a lake. And that's something we have. So as a community, why not benefit from it in ten or fifteen years? Not today, but in ten or fifteen years, people will want to move here.
My concern is that we're... I don't want to say favor, favoring, but we're kind of favoring the lake people to sacrifice the rest of the town. And I don't, we didn't want to create a, create a line between the haves and the have-nots. That's why we didn't want to separate this geographically. Like, if you're around the lake, you can, but if you're in town, you're not. And I, my fear is that we would be making, we would be passing ordinances that would almost strictly benefit lake people and not the rest of the town. And, and my concern is how that, how that would resonate with the rest of the community.
Originally, when, when we started talking about this at the meetings, we were just talking about the lake. And I said, whoo, we've got people, you know, on the other side of town. And maybe, you know, we say, okay, you guys, yeah, it's fine. And on the other side of town, I've got a golf cart, I'd like to drive over to the tennis court or something. You know, I'd like to drive over to the city park. I said, we can't just say, okay, now it's just fine, that it's all around the lake is wonderful. It's got to be, I said, it's gotta be the city. And we all agreed, it's gotta be the city or, or nothing at all. Because of the fact that, as the chief said, we can't just turn our heads on part of our community.
But I think I saw that you were trying to address some of that with parking and some of the news that people keep them. I think addressing some of that. I'm guessing that was part of the discussion or how that...
Guess what?
Quality of life, that's what, that was the terms I was trying to come up with. And we all, as far as safety goes, I mean, that's a concern. But every time I, I jump on a bike and put my bike helmet on and try to ride on the, I ride on the city streets and around. I mean, I'm, I'm accepting risk. And some of you may say that I've already had too much risk and fell off too many times. That's, that's part of it, too. And that, that's a fine line. And I, I tend to, I guess I'm leaning towards more, let, let the individual decide what they're, what we're doing. I also have questions about if we, if we went forward to, is, why are we, an annual inspection? And I get the safety, but my gosh, we don't, we don't inspect cars anymore. We inspected them thirty years ago. If they don't have the stuff and you can't see it, then okay, you got a ticket, they're fine.
That's an option. That's one option. I think Culver did away with the inspections. And when they get their annual registration sticker, they give them the rules and say, it's your responsibility to comply with these rules. That's an option.
Because it, I, I, I don't want to try to create headache. It may become one. And if, and if it does, and I, I would like to address, have another chance to address it again. I realize it's not foolproof, but I guess that's where I'm sitting, mayor and president.
And let me be clear, I'm, I'm just expressing my opinion from a police officer's standpoint and from speaking to the other officers in our department. We will do whatever the council decides. Know that, that we, whatever the council decides, will support it.
About the cost, the registration fee, is a hundred dollars enough? That seems pretty light. Or what's your, the bureaucracy you're gonna have to impose?
It's more than some, but less than others, as far as community, other communities.
And I, I find, one of the things is, I'm reading through this, that came, that I thought of is, somebody, one of you guys, about Main Street. And something is, you're considering this, two things. Just because I have been in other communities, Winnemac is successful because they don't have the Main Street like we have. Their streets are much wider than our streets. And they don't have, I mean, they have street parking, but a lot, they don't have, compared to ours, they don't have the tightness. Those streets that Tom can't even get a fire engine down. But to consider whether you change or restrict the type of traffic that comes through downtown. If you allow this on Main Street, you know, do we have to restrict the type of traffic? Do we have to reduce the speed limit? Or do you restrict golf carts from going? I'm thinking of the backing up out of, I wouldn't, I, 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 say or tell you, I probably would, would hit one. And I have a backup camera on my Tahoe. And I could just see accidentally hitting a golf cart, just no different than I would a bicycle or something like that. So just something else to think about.
My, my concern's in Main Street, big time. I mean, you hitting one, backing out of a parking space is different than one of Jason's semis running over one coming through town. You have a lot of those.
Yeah, and, and some of those guys, they get moving. I know we have a speed limit, but some of those trucks move pretty quick. And they don't stop on a dime, especially if they're moving. And as long as we allow semis coming down Main Street, I think you open the door for some, some serious injuries. Just something to consider.
It's not just Main Street, it's Jefferson and the one-way.
Well, yeah.
You've got vehicles parked on both sides of the street. And if you're crossing Jefferson and you've got a golf cart coming down there, you might not be looking for an orange flag. Which is something else that we consider.
Are two busiest thoroughfares in Rochester, it's Main Street and Fourth Street.
And he's not wrong. Jefferson and Madison one-ways are pretty busy, too. Because people avoid Main Street and take the one-ways.
Mr. Reader took a question in the back. In the shadows.
I have a question. A riding lawnmower, as long as they have the, the farm triangle sign, could be driven on the road, correct? And that's, in my opinion, we compare it with a motorcycle, which motorcycles go fast. I think if we compare them, we're gonna compare them to a riding lawnmower. In the past three years, how many accidents has been that you, the police department or fire department went to for somebody hitting a riding lawnmower? Because I drive mine on the street with a triangle sign. I'm just curious.
None that I know of.
Okay.
But I think there's a lot less of those.
But on my side, I live on Tenth Street, Lee Central. I drive my rider lawnmower because I have the vehicle sign in back. And when we compare it, I mean, everything is a risk. You know, I mean, a bicycle to me is more dangerous than a golf cart. A kid walking is more dangerous than a golf cart. You know, and everybody accepts risk, but the riding lawnmowers, if we've never had an accident with riding lawnmowers, and they're even smaller than a golf cart, I mean, realistically, I, I see four or five any given week during mowing season in my neighborhood. So if they've never been hit and we don't have any statistics at all that a rider lawnmower's been hit by a car and we're worried about the golf carts, and I understand there, there's a concern. But I seen a semi overturned on the way home, out on Old Thirty-one, or Old Thirty-one, Thirty-one. Well, there's a lot more concerns, in my opinion, than golf carts. Everything's a risk.
Do you want to take a straw vote? Any more questions? Straw vote implies looking at this work in particular.
Well, this is a suggestion. I think if we move forward, we would craft one. We would, I mean, this, this doesn't say, yes, definitely, we're doing it. I think a no is a no. But we would look at this and take the suggestions and craft it to what we would, we would want to see. And then it would come to a vote. So it's still, you know, at that point, could still fail or move forward.
So the question would be, how many are in favor of moving forward and crafting a finalized ordinance?
To vote for real?
Yeah. Yeah, okay. A show of hands, is it favored moving forward?
I don't have a problem moving forward with the ordinance officially before us.
Okay. So that was one, two, three.
Three and three.
Three and three.
And you're sure...
Paul Marty?
Paul Marty.
I don't think you'd catch him there now.
Well, why don't we table it until...
In honesty, for me, I'm, I'm on, I'm still on both sides of it. I mean, I, I understand safety is the biggest concern. I, I understand a convenience. So I mean, that's, that's why I don't have an issue crafting something and having more time to think about it. Our time's running out because it's getting to the end of that season.
Well, I gotta, I gotta tell you guys, this wouldn't even be here right now. If my neighbor hadn't almost run over me with a golf cart when I was going to the mailbox. And I said, we're gonna take this to the council. This is, this is crazy. You're driving all over the place, we're taking it to the council. So here we are. I, I don't know that there's a rush, if you want to wait till you have a full council.
That's about the only thing we can do, isn't it?
Yeah. I mean, if we table it until next meeting? Second, second?
Oh, second.
Two seconds, if there was in favor? Okay, postponed? Okay, all right. Postpone it till next meeting? Okay.
To that, though, would you, would you want to take a look at these suggestions and kind of cut it up before then?
Well, that, get your, get your own...
So how do we do that? For the executive or do we need a committee?
Is there somebody with you? Well, yeah. You're probably, you could have, like, committee, have shallow details of the ordinance, like, based on this and other suggestions.
Well, it's gonna be all of you to say it's... And it's already, it's already, it's already, it's already something that's drawn up and be proposed. So what we need to, what we need everybody to do is at the next meeting, we come back, right back to these seats, read it all over again, what we have. You're gonna find, you know, look things up if you want, look things up. And then we can make our vote, whether we move forward. And if we move forward, we have something that we can say, go, okay. It can roll. If we take nay, then we don't. Because it's already there. There's been quite a, quite a bit of work. And I wanted to thank everybody that did sit in, because we all did get along very well, I felt. And, and we, there's a lot of work involved in this. And I don't think we should say, okay, well, let's put this over in file thirteen and start again, start anew. Let's use what, let's use what we've got, our hands on this.
I just, I just don't want to come back next month and be right here where we are, where we've not done any more work on it. There's something, it's a problem for you.
Well, I don't know if, if everybody's gone through it, has everybody really gone, gone through it and read it and thought, okay, what would I change? That's the main thing, do you have it out in the newspaper in front of you and say, what would I change? If we say, okay, we're moving forward, then we can say, okay, these are the changes. And say, Andy, can we do these changes? Is that possible, Andy?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is that my plan? Again, to see why it was postponed in Shelbyville.
Well, you know, I don't want to keep straining it all.
Yeah.
Should we, you want to have a special meeting in a couple of weeks? Or, okay, wait...
Can they meet an executive session?
Um. Or, or, you're in there for the final version of it?
You can, you can have a special meeting for it, and just call it, special meeting for purposes of, you know, refining the draft, but it's, it has to be a public.
Anyone opposed to meeting in two weeks?
There. She's digging.
Two weeks, maybe eleven?
It's the second Tuesday of November, it was a former council meeting night, anyway.
The eleven?
The eleven.
Are you free in the eleven?
I don't have the hour yet, but I've got, I did recommend it, you know, I have you back.
What time?
Six.
Six o'clock?
At least I heard it out.
Six o'clock, I'll be there.
Five o'clock, Mayor, pizza. Okay, that's, I just.
Did you hear that?
You were in charge of that, not me. They sent the mayor.
Five o'clock and pizza?
Yep, you're in charge of pizza.
Now, there's the first, there's the first one out of Mayor's promotional.
You want five o'clock?
Five o'clock, pizza.
Killing me smiling.
What's that, you want a five?
But I think the guy who suggested pizza, he sprayed the pizza. But you gotta bring it up for everybody. You know?
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you very much.
You work for food.
Uh, you gonna see it?
All right, thank you, and, and I would, I would share it, what you just said, uh, thank you to the committee. I think what you meant, uh, three times, is that about right?
I know, twice.
Twice?
Very cool.
Three times?
Yeah, that's true.
Okay. That's, yeah, three times out of your.
Don't minimize our sacrifice.
Thank you, thank you very much for your. Okay, uh, new business. Flags for veterans, Marty's not here, but it looks like we have to handle it right here.
I have something to say too, because Marty, I knew brought that up, and I talked, I talked to Mr. Rick Burn, Steve, and we discussed this. Which the flag, you've all seen this on the front page of the paper, and it is for the VFW, the Legion, don't get me wrong. Uh, money for, uh, uh, flags that are put in, markers that are put on our veterans' graves.
Yeah, for the graves.
And then, uh, six years ago, uh, the county was funding as all, funding it all, I feel like six years ago, you believe, is that right, Steve?
I'm sure on the day, but yeah.
Okay, and the county was funding it all, and then all of a sudden, boom, they're not funding any of it anymore. So now, Legion, VFW donations is up to, uh, coming up with the money for the flags. Which for replacements and stuff, we're talking about maybe four to five, maybe five thousand dollars per year. Like, in that, that's a little on the high side, but about where we're at. Uh, the county has committed some money, I'll let Steve take this in a minute, just what I'm saying, is I was hoping that the city could, uh, don't make a commitment that say, over the next five years, to say donate, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars per year, uh, and give it to the Legion. To Legion, VFW, it doesn't make any difference, uh, and, and, and let, for their, uh, for the flags. And the markers.
The county's already committed right at twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
For flags, and that, that uncovers the flags, and we always go through a lot of these a year, because they get run over by mowers or twice, because of the movement. So if we get just two hundred of them, which is kind of bare minimum to replace that, we got a quote on that, eleven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. For two hundred of these, which that's kind of probably, we'll use more and more of them, but that's just a rough idea, that's like this year, like, if I were right at twenty-five hundred this year, the Legion and the two VFWs already ordered. The county's taken, they've already committed to take care of that, just wondering if you guys wanna help out? Anything like, so, everything, it'd be great, you know, we'd be grateful for all that it all helps.
Done, sorry, I already went there.
Steve, could I, can I see one of the gray markers right there on the flag?
They used to be bronze, but those don't last anymore, because my father's was stolen also, they, they, they steal it, they don't, they made it bronze.
I, I wanted to make that point, you're right, that you can't put bronze without on the grade, because they steal.
Yeah, that's what they do.
It is pitiful.
And I apologize, Steve, you, what is your last name?
Fish, uh, Steve Fishburne.
Thank you, and you're with the Legion?
I'm on the city council, and I'm actually representing the VFW, the Legion.
County council.
County council. But you're representing the, both of the, the and Legion?
Yeah. Kiwan, the VFW, and Rochester V, and Rochester Legion, uh, they all work together, putting the lights out, trying to keep the markers in place, so we can, you know.
These two look nice.
Shada, what kind of funding availability can we have?
Um, I mean, twenty-five hundred dollars, we can, we can find that in our budget.
Would it, would it be something, John's suggestion of the five-year commitment, would it be something where we can, uh, put twenty-five hundred dollars in now, and make it a line item for the next budget?
I will, yeah, I actually added it, I've actually got a list for budget session this year of these commitments, so that we can make sure we get everything itemized that you guys wanna keep. Because we keep getting asked for commitments, this one, I've already added to the list. I just needed an amount, but yes, we can, we can fill up this year's budget and, uh, then commit it for the, for the next, however long you guys want.
So moved.
I got, sorry, I'm not throwing the water, I.
I already moved, I already made a motion.
Yeah, can I motion, Steve, what's your motion?
That we ultimately recognize this year.
Make it a line item?
Moving forward.
Those in favor? Are you in favor?
No, I said.
Who seconded?
Well, I said, a question, I just wanted to.
I should've known.
I said, did I throw a water on, ran out, like, are we limited to funding things that are in the city? I'm fully in favor of the effort for it, but are we limited if something outside the city limits?
I, I think our veterans' organization, uh, the VFW and the American Legion are in the city.
But if you donation to them, and then what do they do with it, up to them?
Well, we're supposed to do all the basics.
Okay, that, that, that's all.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Thank you both for your service.
I didn't know you served, was, um, just served a couple.
Well, you, you weren't a veteran? No, but you're very active in the, in the Legion.
I do have one more item, though, I do, I will need a letter from one of the organizations, uh, for the, uh, request for payment, so I can put it with our claims. So I don't know, who, who do I need to chat with?
I spoke to, I spoke to Gene about it already.
Gene Mayner?
Is it Gene, do, so just go through Gene, or?
You tell me.
Uh, Gene's, uh, Rochester V, uh, Rob Beckman's the Legion, and, uh, Bruce Bakers, the Kiwan, the commander.
Who would you suggest, take the letter to Beckman, or Mayner, or?
Probably the Ro, I mean, yeah, Rochester Legion, they do more seminars than the other two. They do around twenty-three hundred.
Yeah, they do a bunch.
The V does around a thousand, and Rochester V does, or Deana, Kiwan does, about five to six hundred every year.
So the, the Legion, that's Gene, right?
No, Beckman.
Beckman.
Rob?
Rob. One other thing. We may not be able to, which you, uh, service. And, 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 and this is for patriotism service. He'll tell you, he'll tell you all about it. I owe you a little class. Got it? Thank you for your service. Okay, uh, she takes us down to the discussion of the ARP monies for wastewater Apache Drive, our resolution, Shada.
Yeah, I just wanted to reaffirm that when we discussed the ARP monies, when we got that money coming in, we had made a, a plan on how we were gonna spend that money. And I just wanna make sure that the council is, uh, okay with, if we need to modify that plan to cover any expenses at Apache Drive for the infrastructure out there, because we're extending that road. So there's gonna be water, sewer, stormwater, which is all applicable under, for the ARP spending plan, and I just wanted to reaffirm that the council is okay if we need to reallocate. Because originally, we were gonna allocate those monies for, make the stormwater project on Main Street. That, we had to table that due to funding, so if we need to reallocate those monies for that Apache Drive, that the council is okay with that.
Yeah, to refresh your feeling on Main Street project, when we were going out for bids on that, it came back twice, with the engineering estimate was, and of course, that was in the middle of the COVID heyday. So we have tabled it, it still needs to be done, we still have the plan. Uh, the NDOT folks have said, you know, we can't say we put you over here in a different queue, but we will remember, you come back to us for a meeting, we'll, we'll remember it. Uh, we plan on taking a look at that, uh, before the end of the year, to see what it is. Uh, the Apache Drive project, we've, uh, put the, uh, project out for bid, we've advertised for bids. The, uh, engineering firm for that is USI. And, uh, this is going to be interesting, testing the water. They, uh, you know, all these engineering firms, when they put these things together, they put a, uh, a contingent number, uh, ten to fifteen percent higher than what they believe it will actually be to do it. And, uh, see what comes in and what are its bids. So we, uh, we put that out, we'll be looking to see how many bids we get, what it looks like, and then see whether the temperature of the COVID world has changed, and they're coming back down to earth. They're telling us that, yeah, they're seeing construction folks coming back to reality somewhat. So that's going on right now. The other, uh, project situation that, uh, folks have been part of in our redevelopment mission, who meets tomorrow? Morning, eight-thirty? Tomorrow, uh, we are, um, we are closing on the Calton property that gets us, takes us around the wetlands, that BNR and their infamous wisdom designed it to go right through, and then said, good luck on figuring that out. So we have, we figured it out, and we will be buying a piece of property to attach that will take us around, so that will be moving forward after tomorrow, so. So, those things are all going on, but Shada is, what you're pointing out with the ARP funds, is that we would like to redirect those towards the Apache Drive situation.
And the wastewater, the other wastewater project, uh, possibility that we would need is to finish our digester.
Digestor lid.
We've got a, uh, digester lid, our second digester lid, that we need to have recoded and redone to match the first one that we did within the original project. And that was an additional cost that we weren't expecting, so that might be another redirection to bring to, so that way, that, it's already, we don't have to bring in and stage the, um.
The, the crane?
The crane, a second time, which is additional cost to bring that crane in and out to pull that, how much does that weigh?
Oh, it's huge, I mean, yeah, I mean, this crane is huge.
Kind of like you see in the cities with the skyscrapers, it's really kind of neat to watch it, but anyway, so I just wanted to verify that the council is okay with redirecting those funds for those projects as we move forward, if we need to reallocate that.
Just, just to let you know, the, uh, the, the business at hand when we're going through that stuff, uh, we come up with these problems, and we try to solve them, and the two problems were the digester lids, big cement, huge things, that have deteriorated. A brand-new digester lid was six-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars a piece. We sat down, and, uh, Marcus was involved in this, and we brought the people in who have been instrumental in coating, uh, like, uh, stormwater entrance fixtures. And it's very hard coating, and we talked to them about coating our old digester. It's an interesting concept. They did it for one. It's perfect, it's working great, it cost us a hundred-and-eighty-six thousand. So now we're gonna do the second one and save a ton of money. So, that's work, working the, the program.
And I, I thought I included the, I thought I included it in here, the original resolution, seven-twenty-twenty-two, and I'm looking through, apparently I missed it laying on my desk. So, I can, if the council needs, I can re-forward that to you, well, Bob wouldn't have it, but I can re-forward that to you, so you can review it for the ARP spending plan, and then I can consult with Andy if we need to actually, if we covered it, as far as making these shifts, and we just need to document it in the minutes, you know, then we're okay, or if we need to bring that back and have it actually modified, or amended, I should say, since it's a resolution. So, I just need some guidance on that direction you guys would like to go. I mean, if you have any issues with those projects, the money's being utilized for those projects or not?
Marty, you have any comments?
The feds restricted us anyway, so. We're good?
We need to do it.
We do, we do.
Correct.
And it's still in the same category, the feds?
Correct.
You know?
Yeah, I, I, and no matter how we spend it, whether we do it at Apache, or we do it out of the wastewater treatment plant, it follows their guidelines.
Yeah, these ARPA funds are, are interesting, as Shada has mentioned, it's gonna be federal audit, make sure you're handling these things properly, and you're doing what you need to do.
Or I'm happy to just send it all back to.
Well, I know, I know you are.
I'm throwing it out there.
I know you are, but I, I keep trying to convince you, because, you know, you go through the one federal audit, and they say thumbs up.
Yeah.
You know, then it's, it's gonna be okay for the second audit, you know, it's just gonna, no, uh, it is, it is a bureaucratic headache, and I know she's worked hard with it, but, uh, feds are giving out that money, and if we can utilize it, that's just another piece of the puzzle we put together. But, they are, it's the same with the ready grant, those are ARPA funds, and we've gone through what the expectations are, and Shada's department, they're just going to handle that, even though it's a common project, county and city. The monies will go through the city, uh, and there'll be another federal audit. So, they are, they're very, very prestigious on the reports. If you're giving that money out to somebody, there's a quarterly report requirement that has to come back. And if you go to that file and it's empty, you're probably gonna be in trouble. So, doing a good job. So if. Yeah.
No, I don't need a motion, just a direction, to make sure, if we need to mod, I'll double-check with Andy if we need to modify it, and then I can bring it back to you, if we need any modifications. Yeah, go ahead and give me a motion. After what you just said, I'm like, wait a minute, the report, so I got a one from Goodman. Two seconds.
I'll say it.
Those in favor? Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going down to, uh, resolutions. We've got resolution zero-two, twenty, twenty-three, establishing a CCD rate. Shada, would you like to, uh, explain that as well?
Sure, this was, uh, we had our public hearing at the last council meeting, and what this is, is the actual resolution re-establishing our rate from point zero-three-eight to, up to, back up to point zero-five. And Councilman Goodman, would you like me to just read it? Sure, kay. Resolution two, twenty-twenty-three, re-establishing a cumulative capital development fund under Indiana Code thirty-six-nine-dash-fifteen-dash-five. Be it resolved by the City of Rochester County Council, Full County, Indiana, now, a need now exists for the re-establishment of the cumulative capital development fund for the following purpose, for all purposes as set out in IC thirty-six-nine-fifteen-five. Be it further resolved that the council will adhere to the provisions of Indiana Code thirty-six-nine-fifteen-five, the proposed fund will not exceed point zero-five cents on each one hundred of assessed valuation, said tax rate will be levied beginning with the taxes for twenty-twenty-three payable. Said tax rate will be levied beginning with the taxes for twenty twenty-three payable twenty twenty-four. Be it further resolved that a certified copy of the resolution shall be submitted to the Department of Local Government Finance of the state of Indiana as provided by law. The tax rate for this fund is subject to certification by the Department of Local Government Finance.
Okay. Do I have a motion regarding resolution zero two twenty twenty-three? Can you get a motion? Goodman makes the motion in a root second. Those in favor of resolution zero two twenty twenty-three, hands, you may answer. Thank you.
Now, I will tell you as well, to follow up, this still has to go through a remonstrance period. So what I will do now is I have to send over a notice to the county auditor as well as to the newspaper to have everything published. There's a thirty day remonstrance period and then, so it's not completely final yet. We still have, I believe, two more meetings as I look back through those. It's not completely final. But that's the next step.
Okay. Okay, moving on down to department reports. Fire Chief Butler.
Good evening. For the month of February, auto fire alarms, one in the city, one in Rochester Township, structure fire, one in Newcastle Township, brush fires, one in Richland Township, mutual aid fires, one in Avi, one in Mentone, two in Henry Township, accidents, two in Richland Township, medical assist, eighteen in the city, ten in Rochester Township, three in Richland Township, lift assists, three in the city, one in Richland Township, gas leaks, two in the city, animal rescues, one in the city, service calls, three in the city, canceled calls, three in the city, one to Henry Township and one to Rochester Township. Should total fifty-five calls and we conducted one drill. We had six applicants, one withdrew because of age and will be testing April eighth for the vacancy that we have. So that's, that process is moving forward. Pending your questions, that concludes my report.
Anybody have any questions for the chief? The chief was out of town, so he wasn't able to participate in our meeting on the seventeenth with Lutheran folks. Marvin Davis said, I'm with me and we met with Jeff Caesar, VP of Operations for Lutheran, Kathy Kupka, she's another VP, and then Lynn Maron, who's the CEO of Cosiasko County Hospital, who is in charge of the functioning of the ambulance around these areas where they go and how they're stationed. Our discussion was the ambulance situation for county. We're concerned deeply because Rochester Township is the biggest user of the ambulance service. So at the, at the agreement of the consultants, the Ritter group, we should open these discussions up just to get the information. What we found out was Lutheran has taken some, some wraps on their part from us. They really, really did not want to leave anybody in the lurch. That's certainly not their intent. They just want people to understand they're losing buckets of money. And they're going to be very interested in seeing what the Ritter folks come up with as far as the minimum coverage that we take to cover the county. There's some thoughts already on how many ambulances are needed, but it's a big cost. They've already tipped their hand a little bit by telling the Akron folks that to put an ambulance back in Akron would be eight hundred thousand dollars a year. And the Ritter folks have told us, they haven't been involved in any contracts in the state that were less than a million dollars of us. So, you know, it's a big number. It's a big number. It's a big concern. Lutheran's been doing this now for several years without any skin in the game from us, city or county. They've been doing it specifically to make it on the business period. But they, they, they are very interested in continuing a relationship here, but it's going to take some investment. I asked them point blank. I said, are you looking to be made whole or are you just wanting some skin in the game to help absorb the bucket of blood that you're losing? And they wouldn't comment one way or the other. So I, I believe getting down to the road when the Ritter folks bring back their information, I believe there's some room for discussion there. The Ritter folks, we've met with them a couple of times here in City Hall and, and, you know, their opinion is, and, and they're going to bring all sorts of things back, but their opinion of Lutheran is, you know, okay, Lutheran's the top notch operation. They've been doing a good job for you. You got a good relationship with the fire station. Everything's looked pretty good there. Jeez, don't throw the baby out with bathwater, you know? Be sure and get all the discussions in. Because anybody else you bring in from the outside, going to save a few thousand here and there, they're still going to invent the wheel after rebranding the wheel. So anyway, we had a good chat. It was a meeting where we get to know the people now and so we're going to continue to be involved in that because like I said, Rochester has a huge interest. So that was that. Chief, Shad, want to take the floor?
Sure. For the month of February, we had eighteen accidents. We issued seventy-one warnings, fifty-one total offenses, forty-one case reports, four hundred and seventy calls for service, twenty-five lockouts, seven towed vehicles and eighteen people incarcerated. And then you have the crimes that those people were lodged for. Other than that, Catherine Dybly is our newest hire and she has been accepted into the academy and she starts the academy May first.
Actually going a little early, isn't she?
We had her enrolled, but when we enrolled her, it was already full. So she was on a waitlist.
Okay.
They must have increased the class size because we got notice, notified last week that she was, her status had been changed to enrolled. So that kind of put us behind the eight ball on getting some equipment and academy clothing for her, but we scrambled and managed and she goes to the academy in, in May and graduates in August.
Nice. Very good, very good. And she is going home one day. She's, she's all about being a police officer, isn't she?
Yeah, she better be. She doesn't have a choice right now. She's in it to win it. We're going to drag her along.
There you go. Thanks, chief.
Anything else, chief?
No.
Any questions for the chief? Thank you. Okay, we don't have any of the superintendents back there in the back. They all have things that were on the screen for tonight. Okay, committee reports. No one's here from, I don't see Harry Webb, downtown partnership. Don't see David Heidi. Ruth, area planning commission?
It was canceled. Bye.
Have, have you been?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Those are easy to go to because it's seven PM. I know what's going to happen in my restaurant, as I said. But Heather had said that some, she's had some questions about houses made out of compartment cars, you know, the.
Oh, the train cars?
Yeah.
Container?
Container, containers, so the rigid. And she was wondering if, if it would be worth putting it on the table to talk about. And I, my opinion was yes. You know, she felt like she might have said no right away because you, we can't have those anyway, you know, sitting around and, you know, on people's lands and just for the convenience of them. I said, well, a container house would be totally different than just a container that's holding your, your stuff instead of this actual storage unit. So I thought it would be worth talking to. I mean, if I bought a lot, wanted to do something a little unique, if you had a size, you know, talk about the size of them, how many of them you could have a minimum of. I mean, I, I'm sure I can put one up and be happy living in it nowadays, but it wouldn't look real pretty, so why, you know?
Well, let's not talk about where you live now, which is pretty unique.
I can go small.
Is there a company that's doing this?
No, no, it was just somebody brought it to the table, somebody asked.
Weld a couple of cars together.
Oh, I don't know the story, but is it worth talking about? Sure, it's worth talking about and, and seeing the, but I'm sure everybody can figure out what I think.
It's another trend across.
It's another trend and it's another thing that if you just automatically say no, then Rochester's, Rochester still. You know, which I'm sorry, but I've been caring for that my entire life, my adult life, even when I lived out of town.
Well, I don't think anybody's opposed to anything that building wise that looks tasteful.
It's surprising.
But if it's, you know.
The emails that got returned, I think I was the only one that said, absolutely, let's talk about it. Uh huh, we got to think forward.
Okay.
So.
Anything else going on? Okay, no? Okay, questions for Ruth? Goodman, how about that?
I'm coming March tenth and I asked Michael to do a little update.
Well, I'm kind of in that position of.
Oh, there he is.
How you doing?
Good. How are you?
I'm in that position of telling you that things are moving, but there's not a whole bunch I can tell you about because it's, we're just getting it in place. So what I'll start with is the housing study, which is probably the biggest thing right now, is getting underway on Thursday, just initial meeting, three to, or one to three, rather. And I'll be in a better position next time that we meet to give you a lot of details on that, which I promise to do. Moving on from that, the housing study word is out on the, around the state. I've already hosted this past week, a couple gentlemen from Southern Indiana to, who took a tour through Rochester to look at properties, see what kind of apartment complexes we have. That's what they specialize in. And they actually were very, left very impressed with what we have inside the community, the airport and housing stock and things. They want to stay involved. I've had telephone conversations with two other housing developers who are doing the same thing. They haven't come in yet, but they want to keep abreast of what's going on with the studies. And I do anticipate them coming in at some point. Let's see, what else? Oh, and then the last thing I'll say is that we have several small businesses, which is another part of what we do, who are expanding or starting up. And so they contact me for whatever state grants are available, whatever programs that we have to help them. And so we've been doing, doing that as well. And so that's about it for right now.
And you're still on with us for the fourth?
Oh, yeah.
Monday?
Got to wear a suit.
You know, I think so. We received a letter, had invited college real estate folks who have another LLC corporation where they built the community crossing project up there out on thirty, which is affordable houses and apartments that are market priced. This is not HUD anything. They've also done a similar project in Peru. They're interested in doing a project here in Rochester, so they've invited some of us from the city to go and Michael's going to go with us. So that's, that sounds very promising. I mean, they're proven, we can go oversee it over here and go and see it over here. Okay, thanks, Michael.
Sure.
Good seeing you. You know, whenever anybody sits back there with the lights off, I just never know who's back there.
That's why I sit back here.
Yeah, that's what got Lincoln too, you know? Okay, park board, Robert?
Hey, they, they had an election of officers that evening. President's Kay Nixon Davis, vice president's Mitch Hayes, secretary's Alex Berlin. And they discussed possibly purchasing another piece of play here on equipment or you challenged them to do that and are looking into some pieces. And there are also pools coming along and as I understand it, they're looking at various grant opportunities. I think they, first one maybe didn't go, was kind of a dry run, but they're looking into the DNR five-year plan. I think, I guess you got to come up with a five-year plan for the DNR grant.
Yeah, the pool is, as you know, that's a huge undertaking, fifty-year-old pool. Decided to do it a piece at a time, which they're able to do, continue to operate the pool, which is, I think the big filtering system has gone in now, which was, oh my gosh, things antiquated. So any questions for Bob? Any questions for Mitch? We've got a park board member sitting right here in the front row.
You hit it on the head. We've spent a lot of money on it.
Yeah, but you know, we had five thousand kids go through that pool last year.
And of course, you know, we'll be able to draw.
Yeah.
City park, we've got a lot of stuff to do out there.
What if the carts going to be here? Is it, do we have to wait till the end of the year?
Or the end of the year from what Lee said.
You got to wait till we make warrants.
Well, these are going to stay up until August.
I don't know.
Yeah, I hear you, I hear you. Yeah, no, it's been almost a year they've had an order though. This was the COVID deal, you know? The new dog, it's been a wait two years. Yeah, it's crazy.
It's crazy.
Well, Mitch, thank you for your service on the park board. You guys do good work. Any questions for Robert?
I want to hear your office.
Well.
Move along. It was between him and I, I keep going.
Okay, Marty's not here for the BCA and Council on Aging. Solid waste and animal adoption, Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, Animal Adoption Center actually moved their meeting to next week, so I won't have it until next meeting for them. And solid waste, I was not able to.
Tree board EMS, Councilman Fitzwater?
Tree board EMS, Tuesday, March first, the seats are still warm from the night before. We had nine AM meeting here.
Yeah, I guess that's right. Yeah.
Under the old business, they're the status of the work orders of last year, following up on things that have, mostly done, but things that have to get finished yet. They're looking for clarification on jurisdiction for where we can put trees in the right of way on Main Street and Nine Street. Because they have setbacks and everything else, so last thing we want to do is put a tree in and have to take it out. They are, along those lines, they're looking for the, and the, once everything is ready to go, looking for places for new tree installations, whether it was where the previous tree was or a proper placement for a new tree. You don't want to put a big, it's going to be really big and apply for wide space, so whatever's appropriate for a location. Because they bid out the contracts for the removals and pruning, they've got two new possibilities for new service, additional services. So hopefully they'll keep the, the cost down in line. Looking at the Arbor Day event, what we're going to do this year. And then the next meeting is April fifth, nine AM.
And that's, those folks are doing good work. Volunteer Citizen Board, they're working the inventory, computer inventory to make sure we're keeping on top of trees, how they were rated and such. There was a lot of discussion on that as well. John Bowers is doing just great stuff.
They are.
Yes, they certainly are. Any questions for Councilman Fitzwater? EMS, any?
I think we already had the EMS update of Angeles.
Okay.
And the dispatch center has been moved out to the jail.
Correct.
So they were probably able to, with the help of Mr. Elliott, the state and Rudy Yakim, I think, they helped to get things moving.
Did they carry furniture? Did they carry furniture?
Uh, they, they carried the water, they helped get things done. They were saying the reports at some other places are waiting two years to get their equipment transfer over. And so I don't know if they called any favors or not, but they, they got it done, so they've removed out there now.
We, we ran into things like that at the Wastepark and when you impose contract penalties.
Yeah.
It's amazing what can happen.
Yeah.
Yeah. Chief, yesterday was the move, wasn't it?
Today. Today.
Today.
Yeah. Yeah, just got a text about twenty minutes ago, said they just got things finished and they're up and running.
Good.
Repeaters all.
Good. Okay. Okay, uh, Water Board, John?
Yes, I, I miss the water board meeting. I was on vacation and when I saw from my notes that I received from the Water Board that there was no new business, no old business, everything is, I'm sure, running wonderfully at the Water Department, as it has been during the great years. I see. It was a, like, ten-minute meeting, so I'm sure it went pretty good.
Went pretty good.
Yes.
Yeah. We are in the process of looking for a site for wealth.
Yeah, so we've discussed that at the last, at the last meeting.
And we're getting close on that situation. Derek was not on vacation?
No. He's going to be watching golf somewhere pretty soon.
Yes.
Going to the Astros. I don't know about that.
Any legal issues?
I do not have any time to visit the council.
Any ADA concerns, you're aware of Shada?
No, sir.
Okay. I would entertain.
Second.
Second.
Sorry, Todd, do a little.